The second day of the third regular session of the FSM Congress will now come to order. May we all stand for a moment of silent prayer. Ron Calhoun, Chief Speaker.
Senator Artos, Senator Christian, Senator Figuerre, Senator Coeland, floor leader Harper, Senator Kwon Min, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Palick, Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Usmaul, Senator Welly, Speaker Semino.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, eleven members are present.
We have a quorum to transact business today. Before we continue on, I just want to take this moment to thank Vice Speaker Moses for presiding in our opening yesterday. Okay, Chief, floor leader.
Thank you, Speaker, and good morning to you, all honorable members, staff, as well as those who are observing our session this morning. I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
It's been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item.
Mr. Speaker, item five, Presidential Communications. There are none.
Speaker.
Yes, floor leader Harper.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I understand that this dinner was supposed to be held yesterday. And I just want to ask, I don't know whether it would be impolite to ask this question, but I'm wondering as to what party this ambassador belong to? Is he a Republican or a Democrat?
Sure is. Subject to go up the chair. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Kirk.
Mrs. Speaker, item six, FSM Supreme Court Communications. There are none.
Continue.
Item one. Item seven, Member Communications, none. Item eight, Departmental Communications.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker. Sure it is. Subject to go up the chair.
I'm always going to use.
Congress is back in session. We're on Departmental Communications. Assigned at, Chief Kirk, next item.
Mrs. Speaker, item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications. We have number twenty-one dash thirty-four.
Okay, assigned at Chief Kirk. Next item.
Item ten, State Communications. We have number twenty-one dash seventeen.
Okay, assigned at Chief Kirk. Next item.
Item eleven, State Supreme Court Communications, none. Item twelve, Municipal or Town Communications, also none. Item thirteen, Foreign Government Communications. We have receipt of number twenty-one dash thirty-two.
So who wants to go to Geneva? That's for discussion later. Next item. Order of the day.
For standing committee report, item fourteen, we do not have any, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item fifteen, we have a special committee report and it's number twenty-one dash oh-seven by Honorable Romolo, Chairman, Committee to Wait on the President.
Sure it is. Subject to go up the chair.
They have worked with other donors in carrying out all these outreach and are asking for to support the request that they have put forward to continue to reach out to the remote and places that they need to. Another subject that was discussed during the committee to wait is Constitutional Convention budget. We have seen a proposed budget, which I would ask that we, the two committees maybe call for an oversight to get more good understanding on the budget requested. Basically, the budget requested is to continue the convention and also the ESG and the consultation by the delegates. So we could go in details when we get a good amount when we have the hearings. Another issue that we was discuss on the agenda was the labor issue in the Philippine with the foreign workers. The president and its support staff have indicated that work is in progress. Members have asked the status on the progress since it's been a long pending issue. The timeline that was given is that maybe the second or third week of February, there will be an MOU signed between the two governments. And as part of the work in progress from now until the end of February. Another subject that was discussed is the Foreign Investment Bill, which I believe the RND committee have done in state during its hearing. And president have indicated that he wanna push for the the foreign investment bill and also seek the support of the Congress. Again, nominations is also one of the subjects that also discussed. He assure us the committee that there will be nominations forthcoming this season, namely the other overseas emissions that are still yet to be filled. He indicated that New York will await, nominations for New York will await for next session. He will still look at with the establishment of the Geneva office. And that's basically why New York will be await to nominate in the next session. But other board members and commissioners will also be forthcoming this season. The revised revenue projection was discussed as we aware. First, it was reported at nine million. Now, we're at, it was indicated during the committee that we are at twelve point one million projected revenue. Again, he also asked to support, he's supplemental, there is also supplemental requests from the executive and he also make note that he also be mindful of Congress needs that he also give a room for Congress to also submit their supplemental and other projects that we may deem needed. And our legal, government legal staff will look into the legality of using what appropriate for the vessels if it can use on different vessels. Then last but not least, is a request for renovation of the principles housing. Here, namely the one for Vice President, Speaker, Chief Justice, that requested maybe a hundred thousand, twenty-five each to renovate. He indicated that they are in need of renovation for all the residents. So again, he assures us of his intention to support our working reasons and to ask that we support his request on the supplement as it's critically needed. Some of them are critically needed, especially the one in Japan, which they need the money to secure the funding so they can go in and purchase the property. Thank you, Speaker, and I would also ask other members if they could supplement what I reported if I have missed out.
Make a motion for adoption of your report.
And I move for a motion to adopt the said report.
It's been moved and seconded. That's then a special committee report number twenty-one dash zero-seven be adopted by Congress. Any further discussion by members of the committee? Vice Speaker Moses.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you and members. I just have several clarifications, especially on the budget, the supplemental budget.
Proceed, yeah, go ahead.
And the projection. I only see one submission from the Department of Finance, and that's nine million, but have we received an official communication on an updated revenue projection or is it forthcoming? And the second one is the the amount stated in the report on page two of four hundred thousand for the the Constitutional Convention that is ongoing. I believe they're in recess now. They submitted a budget of one point six and the president reduced it or I'm not too sure I understand fully what a reduced amount of four hundred thousand. If it's reduced from one point six to one point two or they reduced it by one point eight hundred thousand. So those are my two points of clarification that I would like to request. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Moses, for the revenue projection. As of this morning, we have not received any new revised projection other than the nine point one that was received some days ago. On the other questions of the convention and I will allow the committee to respond. Chairman Romolo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And with regard to question concern or raised by Vice Speaker Moses, we did indicate and as a president on the revenue projections that we, there has been numbers that members are listening to or there is floating around in Congress that one is nine, one is twelve, one is fifteen. So what president indicated that we will stick with the reason, with the actual amount, which he indicated that it's twelve. So he have not submitted. He assure us that it will be submitted, but that's the amount, that's the number that he say that we'll, he will submit it, that it's the actual amount that we have. It's twelve point one. And on the subject of the convention, the budget, that's the reason why I would ask that we jointly conduct a public hearing because the budget four hundred eighty-seven submitted by president. He also indicated to us that the Constitutional Convention will also submit their budget proposal supplement. So we need to find out how, what's the actual amount that is needed from, for the CONCON. Because president is submitting a different number and the convention is something, may submit a different number as we have learned. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, in the supplemental request by the president, the four hundred thousand that he is requesting is for the post-convention education program. It's not for their actual operation cost. My understanding from meeting with the CONCON president is that their budget is about seven hundred seventy thousand. That's for the duration of their convention for the forty, thirty to forty-five days. So they are submitting different things because the president, of course, is responsible for the education program. We want to separate that from the actual convention budget, operation budget. So we have in total about one point some million, one point one or one point two for the entire convention and including the education. So that's what we will be working on. It's true that the convention submitted its budget directly to us. I guess that's what their staff decided to do, so we have to deal with that. On the president's projection, right now we only have nine point one. We haven't received anything, so we will take it as we receive them. And it's not dictating to Congress what to do. It's us. We will decide what to do with that. Okay, Vice Speaker Moses?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to make a comment on the on the discussions on the Constitutional Convention budget. It seems that the amount they're requesting is gonna be, that the convention will be spending upwards of seventeen thousand dollars a day according to that budget if they run the whole forty-five days. If they run for thirty, it's gonna be way above that per day. So I'm, I assume and I'm pretty much confident that this is way above the previous Constitutional Conventions that were held in the past.
Thank you. That's true because, of course, they're basing it on forty-five days. And there is a bill that's been introduced which would clarify something so it's clear what they can and cannot do in terms of their recess and allowance and those kind of things, just to keeping control of their expenses. But yeah, we can discuss that and we'll allow the committees to work on those as we move forward. Any other discussion from members?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning. Yeah, the convention submitted a total budget of one point six million. Then current available, four hundred sixty-eight plus thirty-seven for the pre-con. So the shortfall is one point one million. In the report, remember, and it's in the report that the four hundred thousand submitted in the supplemental budget is already included in the budget submitted by the convention president. So I agree, Speaker, that I think the amount being requested is for the post-convention. And we emphasize the need to focus on that post, you know, public awareness. Because I think the internal initial process of consultation internally, I don't know if we should spend too much resources on that, but the actual awareness program, public education on those resolutions that are approved by the convention. And I agree, I did the math by by convention day, that's very expensive and that's much higher compared to the previous conventions at one point six million and against numbers of days, convention days. So we need to keep in mind that there's a double request. It's in the supplemental budget submitted by the president, but I reviewed the budget submitted by the convention. It's also included that the public awareness during recess and also post, post-convention.
Speaker. Thank you. And yes, Chairman Romolo.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I do agree with the Vice Chairman Palick stated, but I think the Constitutional Convention, the delegates, they're looking at from past experience that during the first, second, and third Constitutional Convention,
That during the first, second, and third Constitutional Convention, hardly the referendum were passed. I think that's one reason they wanna have a consultation before They come back and finalize any referendums that they may come up with To have citizens a clear understanding on what's forthcoming in terms of referendums. And I believe that's one reason why they wanna have a consultation prior to the end of the Constitutional Convention. That way, after the Constitutional Convention, when they go out for an E S T, Citizen have a good understanding on the proposed referendum that it passed the Constitution Convention. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's make it clear. Let's separate the issue of the post-convention education and the convention itself. I believe the post-convention education, we can take that up later. But for now, let's concentrate on the report. Any further discussion? Chairman Berman on the report.
Yes, Speaker. Thank you very much. Good morning to you, members, and all of those that are observing our session. Speaker, I know I will be doing an oversight later on But if the committee committee to wait on the President can explain on the five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar It's a more job to be done for N C Ds and vaccination. I'll give an example. Right now, we're gonna try to ask Congress to pass a resolution For eight hundred thousand dollar to go around the F S M On on T P and all of those things. I'm wondering why aren't they using that time to go to go around and do the vaccination at the same time To save cost the way we're doing things? And did the President say anything? He's gonna give us a breakdown of that five hundred thousand dollar?
Members of the committee, you have any response to the question raised by Chairman Berman? Yes, Chairman Net?
Thank you, Speaker. President did mention that public hearing by relevant committee, especially committee of age Will find out the detailed breakdown.
That, yeah, alright.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. And then my next one is that mentioned by Chairman Robson. The ships will be, in other words, for Tridoc in next month. So what's the backup for all the islands of F S M? Which ship will be or do we have any backup right now?
No, it's still in the, still being built. That's in Vietnam. But anyway, Chairman Romolo, you have any?
Because if I still have it, if that, if Chief Milo, what's the status on Chief Milo?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Speaker, and Chairman Berman. Yes, indeed, there were discussion on services after the two vessels are tied up in Tridoc. First, navigators will be only in Japan for nine days. It will be a quick return as they will just replace the generator. Second, they're also exploring ways to continue the service, and that's what they were asking President and Secretary Who are looking into the legality of using money appropriated for our new vessels If they can use on other vessels to continue the service while the vessels are tied up at Tridoc. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, they should submit something, propose amendments to the appropriation.
That is actually a great news to Lady Minto that belongs to Pompey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Berman. Any further discussion on the report? Questions being called for? If there's no objection, I'm just disappointed that this report is only four pages Because the meeting took four hours, broke record. Anyway, so let's vote. You're looking at me, Chairman Orsmal. You want to say something?
No, I wasn't thinking of it, but since you ask, this meeting, one that I attended Was the best that I have attended Committee to Wait. More detail, we discuss about anything and everything under the sun. The lunch was very, very good. I got sick from it, but And it was just a pleasant meeting of the minds with executive branch. So good. Let's adopt the report.
Thank you. That's why I'm disappointed the report is only four pages. Anyway, there's a motion to close debate. If there's no objection, debate is closed. Let's vote. Those in favor of the adoption of sending, I mean, special committee report twenty-one dash zero seven, say yes. Both no? Motion carried. Special committee report number twenty-one dash zero seven is adopted by Congress. Next report?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item sixteen, S M and Measures and Communications. We have a referral sheet number twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
Chairman and members, review that for your planning purposes. Next item?
Item seventeen, Unfinished Business. None, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item eighteen, Bill Calendar. As a speaker, the first bill on the calendar receiving number twenty-one dash eighty-six for first reading Which was deferred from special session in Chuk to general session, N C P number twenty-one dash eighty-six. It's a bill for an act to amend section three of Public Law number twenty-one dash nineteen As amended by Public Law number twenty-one dash thirty-nine To authorize for the purposes of voting on the constitutional amendments Special polling places in Saipan, Hilo, Portland, Seattle, One city in Southern California, one city in Utah, Kansas City, one city in Texas, And one city in Arizona. To add that proposed amendments shall be first in the order of the ballots Before the ballots of the candidates for office and for other purposes.
Chairman Romolo? It's moved and seconded. The Congress passed on first reading, C P number twenty-one dash eighty-six. Discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa?
I I need to refresh my self memory on this bill, so I move to defraction.
Okay, there's, is there any second? It's been moved and seconded.
Recess.
Short recess. Subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. I will allow Vice Speaker Moses to say something on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It was just in support of what the motion by Chairman Figueroa, I had some issues that I stated on the record during the last special session With regards to the places, and then if the recommendation is to pass on first reading and then conduct, I'm also, with all due respect to the chairman, because I don't have a say on the second reading votes. So I'm in support of the chairman's motion to defer. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. We'll do it right. So if that's the case, we will vote on the motion. Then it's up to Chairman Romolo to figure out what to do, okay? So there is a motion to defer, which was seconded. Okay, since I allow Vice Speaker Moses, I'll allow you, Chairman Kullen, for we vote.
Thank you very much. Are we in recess or?
No, we're in session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I know this bill is very important for our citizens of F S M. Deferring this bill, it's already deferred during those two sessions. And I don't really know why we defer this one. I know that the appropriation for this Polling places abroad. For me, I know that if we didn't appropriate this special session For those polling places outside, I think we are delaying the right of the citizens Because they have right to vote for those constitutional amendments. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask that if we can take action on this And ask my good chairman and my good vice speaker to allow this bill to move forward. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, for the privilege?
Yes, you have a point stated, Chairman Figueroa?
Yeah, I I believe the the motion is undebatable, so I suggest we vote on the motion.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Figueroa. We understand that. I'm trying to be nice to our vice speaker and our chairman. Anyway, there is a motion which was seconded, so let's vote. Those in favor, motion to defer, say yes. Both no? Motion carried. The bill is deferred to the next day of session. Okay, next bill?
Mr. Speaker, the the next bill is C P number twenty-one dash ninety-six.
Short recess. Subject to call of the chair. It's back in session. Next bill?
Mr. Speaker, C P number twenty-one dash ninety-six for first reading. Again, it was deferred from Chuk session to general session. C P number twenty-one dash ninety-six, it's a bill for an act to further amend title fifty-two Of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, as amended by amending section two oh five thereof For the purpose of revising the base salary schedule for employees of the national government By amending section two oh eight as been enacted by Public Law number eighteen dash one hundred fourteen To increase the cost of living allowance or COLA For for employees of the national government and for other purposes.
Chairman Romolo?
Move for adoption after said bill?
It's been moved and seconded. That Congress passed on first reading, C P number twenty-one dash ninety-six. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, there's no objection. Debate is closed. Let's vote by a call of members. Chief clerk, call the roll.
Yes, Senator Aratos, Senator Christian, Senator Figueroa?
No.
Senator Kolland? Florida Harper?
I was bribed to say yes.
Senator Conman? Vice Speaker Moses? Senator Neath? Senator Pali? Senator Berman?
Amine.
Senator Romolo?
Yes.
Senator Orsmal? Senator Wally? Speaker Semina? Uh, Mr. Speaker, nine members voted for.
For that reason, C P number twenty-one dash ninety-six does not pass Congress. Next view?
Mr. Speaker, we have C P number twenty-one dash ninety-eight for second reading. C P number twenty-one dash ninety-eight, it's a bill for an act To prohibit the importation, sale, or distribution of one-time-use disposable styrofoam And plastic food service items and plastic shopping bags By enacting a new chapter four of title twenty-five of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia As annotated, as amended, and for other purposes.
Okay, short recess. Subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. We're still on C P twenty-one dash ninety-eight. Chairman Berman?
Thank you very much, Speaker. To the understanding that all members have, I will do a motion to defer action on twenty-one dash ninety-eight to tomorrow's session.
It's moved and it's been moved and seconded. That's C P number twenty-one dash ninety-eight be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Both no? Motion carried. C P number twenty-one dash ninety-eight is deferred to tomorrow's session. CB number twenty-one dash ninety-eight is deferred to tomorrow's session, next bill?
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the Chair. Congress is uh back in session, uh Chairman Romolo? You want to withdraw, do you want dash one one nine?
Yes, and I I wanna withdraw and also reconsider another bill.
No, let's go one by one. Okay, any second to the motion to withdraw and place? It's been moved and seconded, that's CB number twenty-one dash one one nine be withdrawn from committee and placed on the Bill calendar for first reading action, those in favor of that motion, uh say yes. Both no, any motion to suspend, I mean rules to suspend, uh?
So move, Mrs. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded, that any relevant rules that would impede our action on the motion be suspended, those in favor say yes. Both no, motion carried, the relevant rules are now suspended. So let's vote on the Uh motion to withdraw and place, those in favor say yes, both no, motion carried, so CB number twenty-one dash one one nine is Withdrawn from committee and place on the bill calendar for first reading action. Uh Chairman Romolo, motion?
Move, move for adoption on the first, on the first reading.
It's been moved and seconded, that Congress passed on first reading, CB number twenty-one dash one one nine, discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection, discussion is closed, so let's vote by roll call of members, first reading, Chief Clerk. Roll call.
Sen- Senator Aratos, Senator Christian, Senator Figueroa?
Yes.
Senator Coulent? Florida Harper? Senator Conman? Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Neath, Senator Palick? Senator Berman?
Aimai.
Senator Romolo? Senator Orsmal?
I've been asked to vote yes.
Senator Wally, Speaker Semina? Mrs. Speaker, eleven members voted in favor.
So CB number twenty-one dash one one nine has passed Congress on first reading, next bill?
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the Chair.